I welcome the Centerville Town Council meeting for June eleventh, twenty twenty four. We call the roll please.
David Cate.
Here.
Josh Tutter.
Here.
Jack Bodder.
Here.
Gary Hobart.
Here.
Dan Waters.
Here.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. This is our very first meeting in the new city building. But we've got a lot of moving in yet to do before it's actually officially open. But I think with the space and with all the improvements that we've got here, it's really going to be nice for the community. We'll have the drive up out here on the main street. So you pay with utility bills without getting this out of your car. The weather's bad, so then when we get all moved in, we'll have an open house. So with that, has everyone gone over the minutes for May the fourteenth, twenty twenty four, county meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second? A second. I have a second by David. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, for session? Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion accepted.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by David. We call the roll please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Has anyone gone over the claims? Are there any questions or corrections for those? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. We call the roll please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. We have a billing adjustment. I would entertain a motion to approve the billing adjustment. I have a motion by David. Do I have a second?
Mr. President.
Yep.
Which one are we actually doing here?
We're doing the town's billing adjustments.
Okay.
I need a second on that. I have a motion. I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. And I need a motion to approve the allowance report.
I just want to add that yes, make a motion.
You got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Main Street. Nathan. Railroad. Our way days.
The other thing we have is we need someone to check on power to the pole at on the northeast corner of Main and Main. Because I know at Christmas in Centerville it was not working. And I don't know if that was last parade.
Yeah.
It worked for the parade.
Did it?
Yes.
Okay, because I know it did not work at Christmas in Centerville.
Worked fine for the announcer for the veterans parade.
Okay. We'll just, I guess we'll check. Couple weeks or so prior to, just to make sure. Because we're gonna check everything down the park too.
Would your battle of the bands start?
Um, there, we didn't have one this past Saturday. I think, I believe the next one is the twenty second.
Twenty second of June?
Yeah, yes. Because the ones I had, they could not get everything together for this time again.
Anything else?
That's it.
Next thing we have is the comprehensive plan. We have, our grant writers have started and all that. They sent out letters and advertised to the companies to do the comprehensive plan. Once we get those back, we will have a selection committee to go over those comprehensive plan. Everything has to be in by the first of August. And we would know if we get the grant by the first of September on that. So just to let you know where that, that process. Next thing we have is the Wayne County mitigation hazardous plan. That we had a discussion and moved it here to accept that. So I would entertain a motion on that, accepting that.
So.
I got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second? A second. I have a second by David. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. We have the county commissioners to edit contract that we have to move or renew. Ed, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, it's not so much that you are renewing it tonight. It's that under the terms of your current contract, you're obligated to notify the commissioners by the end of this month whether you intend to not renew. So in other words, as a courtesy to them, if you can go forward with your budget process and they go forward with their budget process, you would typically at this point let them know if you intend, if they, if there's going to be another tax and they're going to do that contract for the next four years, that you intend to continue that relationship.
So Ed, have you got any comments, questions on that? And what's that deadline?
Deadline is at the end of this month, June thirtieth, to let them know if you don't intend to renew.
But if we still do that, it automatic?
Business as usual, then you would, that'd be your motion tonight. And then I would notify, can we turn you, we intend to continue.
If you would leave that on for the work session in case somebody has a comment or question on that.
Please, partner?
Let me do some more here.
Where do you want to deliver?
Yeah, he's asking. This is the information to talk to you before about on the block twisters. And you recall that we discussed it, y'all approved, we could go ahead with it. That was before we lost three officers and had to hire three more. So due to limited funding, I held off on that at that time. But now I've been working with the town clerk. And I believe we found funding to go ahead with this. With our opioid distribution, the unrestricted account. We have enough funds in there, I think that that would fund this for us. This is a two-year contract that we have to sign. But we only pay the first year of the installation cost upfront. And then next year would be the second year cost. We'll pay it on the anniversary date, that's when the first camera starts up. I think this is going to help us tremendously. As Josh, Josh Tutter knows, they had those in Conneville. And they've really helped quite a bit in some of the investigations that we get involved with. So I'd like to ask permission to go ahead with that, that project and get it going. Because where replacements for these will be, I have to get, well, I don't. The company here will get permitting through INDOT to get them put up.
Now, that first year, that's, that's seven thousand three hundred?
Yes.
And then the second year, six thousand?
Yes. And if we continue from there on, it's six thousand every year.
So will be annual renewal after the first two, first two years?
Uh, no, the first contract that I'm asking for approval for is for a two-year contract.
And after that, is it two years or year by year?
Yeah, we have to go through that, is that correct, Ed?
Yeah, I, I believe you should still one-year ago. But maybe two-year contract, just depending on how many cameras you have.
They want the two-year contract basically because they have to go through all this process getting permitting and installing the equipment and getting this up and running with it.
They also maintain those cameras under the contract. If one's hit by a car or one's damaged, they, they'll take care of it.
Yeah, it's fully, they take care of any problems with it. But we've used, utilized other agencies' cameras and it's helped us resolve several things.
And I'm assuming they, when they came out to, to give you the, the information, they probably did a survey and determined where, what was the best place for those cameras?
Yes, we discussed it, as you can see in the pages there, show the map. That is where I would like to place the map. They agree that that probably be the best location.
I see value in it. I would not surprise me if you don't see the pay themselves and just reduction in man hours. And we saw that with, with the case that we were able to assist with. You guys spent a lot of time looking for that vehicle with the rest of it. It took about five minutes. And we were able to determine the owner of the vehicle in question. Got that one close up right there.
Well, I know one incident, you know, that happened here. You were able to help us because they went through Connors to help them. So it would also help some of the other communities around us would be searching. And if they came through here, we'd be able to pick them up.
Mr. President. I think hypothetically, because I'm not doing that every day like you are, even Josh, but if it has anything to do with saving somebody's life or if anyone's safer for us, the cost is not a matter, it's getting done, so.
I don't, I don't know how much detail you'd like to go into the system. But they benefit you more than just trying to find a hypothetical one vehicle. It's a proactive system that can alert you and your agency to a myriad of violations and warnings. Even right down to Amber or Silver Rivers. Anything that can be entered into the federal and state databases, they will. And we're talking within five, six, seven, eight seconds. Your officers are aware that.
Something in the neighborhood?
Yes.
That's why we need a placement that we've decided on. So we've got that lapse in time to order this. It's pretty instantaneous, so.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question? Is that okay?
Well, I have.
Okay, thank you. So Main Street is talking about putting a camera in the park for the arches that we, that we gave to the town, that Main Street had the grant to create. So is something like that able to keep an eye?
Not.
Okay, I don't know.
We're going, but this is completely.
Okay, I, I didn't know, I didn't know that.
This is mostly criminal activity.
Right.
Or even, or happen.
Right, so the, the cause for the conversation was we were having damage done to the arch. So I didn't know, I mean, you know, I didn't know if there was any.
That would be different.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion then on Ed's request.
So.
Good. By? Take it forward. I got it. Motion by Josh, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by David. We call the roll please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, next thing, I want to let you know that we were finally through a golf hiring process. We lost three officers and we re-hired three officers. The last hire just started this Monday, and that was Robert Geitz. And I think most of you have all kind of introduced to him. But we have Austin Hines, who we hired first, then Jason Klaus, and then this last one is Robert Geitz. I think everybody's going to do real well and we're happy to have him up on our team. Matter of fact, Robert has taken upon himself, and he has contacts with Moose Lodge and BMW and different organizations like that. And I've been teasing him that he bought his way onto the department. But he's actually gotten donations for us. We received a donation from Moose Lodge of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then I just received a donation from the BMW in Richmond for four thousand dollars. And what we're working on a project, discussed amongst all my guys, one of our biggest needs is the lightweight rifle plates to put in our vest panels. We thought we had some narrowed down at a reasonable price. But it goes turned out they're way too big to put in our vests that we currently wear. So we're kind of reassessing that and trying to find the thinner ones. And I've got another couple of them on those. But that's what we're trying to get our donation money built up for so we can do that. And then Daniel Houston, I sent him up to Huntington County Sheriff's Department. They have an instructor development course going on. So now he is certified instructor through the academy. And then Josh Millsap, he just attended last week, went to Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and passed one hundred percent for firearms instructor. So now we have two instructors on the department again and firearms instructor. My intention is to probably send Daniel back up for becoming emergency vehicle operations instructor. As soon as we get enough money to do that. And then the last thing I have is, I know Kevin over here's already got approval for the new sign-out front. But we've, we've come up with a possible replacement for a redesign.
Oh, no. You crop it out, it's a little bit perfect.
Now we'll stick with the original. Which is more, Harry, Harry?
Mr. President.
Yes?
Um, I know that's just a joke.
Yes.
And, but it's not a joke to me. You've served very good in this community, paid a lot of attention to that. A lot of the people in this town have been frustrated, things go wrong. And including the project with this room that we're setting right now. There are a couple of things that I would very like to discuss with other council leaders about capabilities of this town's water over the last few years. And we will have any discussion at any time. Ed, I would also say that I work with the fire department to help them get their safety best. And I would be more than welcome to work with community businesses from Richmond, Wayne County, and any other clubs. I just, I just joined another association where the deal is back on in Richmond. And I would be more than honored to help you guys raise money for plates or whatever that might be. So if you have anything to contact me, I will go out there and, and work on them. Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
If I could add just a second, Mr. President. Ed, that commitment on your hiring process. I know how hard those are, I know how time consuming they are. And you look around, Annie and Jason are joining County. They're having trouble finding a single applicant that they can hire, let alone three and forty-five to sixty days. So I think that speaks pretty highly of how you run your organization from there, so.
First, Ed, the recent increase in our basic salaries would help out tremendously to keep what we have. Everybody, all the guys were really happy with it.
Anything else? Anything else?
No, that's all I have, so.
Sure, you can't pick on Dan a little bit more today?
Well, you see he's carrying.
Can you pick on Dan a little bit more today?
You see he's carrying a torch.
No, really, you know, of course, Jack, Gary, we've been on and, they've been on and off council leaders. We've worked together the whole time. But most people don't realize, you know, what it takes. It took four years negotiating and trying to get this building right here. And we were able to do that. And then here we are, almost ready to open up again. But we've probably over the twenty-nine years, we're somewhere close to forty million dollars of grant money and stuff that we put in this community. And without these guys up here, you know, helping, we would never have been able to achieve that. And all that money over the years has got us out, you know, to seven across seventy with our city limits. You know, keeping our infrastructure, trying to keep our rates, you know, down. So, and it, it takes a lot of work to go after those, these funds. Working on the electric, Kevin, we've been really on that. And if we are successful to get that, we'll get off this old four K system. And, you know, that's going to help everybody with their electric system. So a lot of the stuff you don't see, but it's buried in the ground and are hidden. But without doing that, we, the town cannot grow. And I was just giving some statistics, I have told the statistics. But Centerville gets looked at more than anybody in Wayne County as far as a place to go and live. Now they're getting ready to, I think the chamber of one of us is getting ready to do housing assessment. That's going to be kind of interesting, so.
Man, can I have a little bit to, that ends up with that. You don't know how much I appreciate the two gentlemen on the end of this table putting their life and time in here. This is, this is not much to relate to before you do. They're both serving very well. They're very good colleagues I have on this council.
Well, at least one of them.
And they have experiences from different forms of other communities that actually are an asset. I think you had mentioned that in the last census was done that out of all small towns in Wayne County, including the video of Richmond, that we were the only one that sustained or gained where everybody else was losing. Community and business, I've seen this town pull together, this community, we count the center township to try to at least sustain what we have. And in this day and age with the way the economy is and the way that things are around, we're going away in prayer and hope that we continue to head that in the right direction instead of the wrong direction. Thank you, Ed.
My Ed, we were the only community in twenty-ten and twenty-twenty census that grew in Wayne County. So that's twenty years right there of, you know, growth that we've had. It's, it's been good for the community, so. Kevin?
I'm the member here.
Gerald?
Going to commit further, we had a total of seventeen for a total of four hundred and six dollars. Code enforcement side, we had twenty-four reports or complaints. All those were handled without any type of judicial force, but people took care of themselves.
Streets?
I can report on streets.
Water and fire?
Well, to bring us up to speed on the towers.
Well, the east tower was emptied Sunday. Yesterday, L M did move in and they are setting up and getting ready to start work on the east tower. We're looking at around six weeks or so minimum, the east tower will be out of service. And we're looking at around the twenty-fourth of June. And they will start mobilizing to start on our line replacements and services.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Fire?
Um, let's see, we had forty-eight runs for the month, thirty-nine metal runs, eight fire runs. We had three car accidents, two structural fires, and we helped out an disabled vehicle. We've met with two companies regarding the new fire engine. And we're going to meet with the third, wait a year back from those other two companies with price and specs and everything, so. That's all I got.
Hold on.
Wait for it, one more.
I have a third one, I have a fourth one, or?
Left?
Well, um, the grid grant application, they have requested information. I have to send off this afternoon to us, so we're still moving forward with that. We've replaced six poles so far this month. No outlet used to report at this time.
Needing backup, we have a couple of adjustments. Gary, you want to?
Sure.
Ever go? Water? Been very bad.
For their books or adjustments?
Both.
You can do either one of them or both of them.
I have everything approved, so. Yeah, go, I'll, I'll, I'll yield to the place water commissioner and stormwater commissioner. Two silver's? Yeah, that address is on three oh seven Albury. And are they both the same address?
No.
No. Which one applies to an Albury address, the forty-six forty-three or the thirty-three sixty? Both of them.
Both of them. The other one's two oh East Wall.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we make the adjustment for three oh seven Albury here with the legacy that we have here. Very funny for forty-three, forty-six forty-three, thirty-three sixty. Did you make that motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second, no one, Kevin, it's like okay.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. You, clerk, do you have anything?
Wait a minute.
We have another.
Just have the other one.
We got one more.
And that's two oh East Wall. And that was, uh.
Two oh.
Okay, by Bill Martin.
That adjustment was two forty, two twenty-five?
Yeah, sure. I'd make that motion, I'd adjust that.
Got a motion by Gary, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Josh. We call the roll please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tutter.
Aye.
Jack Bodder.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye.
I'd like to also make a note that anytime we make a adjustment on any of these utilities, we do get them okayed and checked by either the town manager or employee. Your phone can make an adjustment. Mr. President.
Yeah.
I'd like to step back in the agenda a little bit. I'd like to step back in the agenda a little bit, into stormwater. I, now, personally, was affected again for about the sixth time over the last twenty-two years since I moved into the town of Centerville. And, uh, two thousand twelve, I approached the town council about the issue just in my area as a resident. And I think the excavating company and a lot of hard work, they spent, I'm guessing, I think it was around eighty to a hundred and fifty dollars investment through the Bald Islands to help remove some of that water down in Elm Creek, or it's not even, we actually call it a creek, it's, it's got another term, correct?
Elm, okay.
Okay, and, um, so then, over, that, that is back in two thousand eleven, I wasn't living here a month. Uh, since then, it flooded home, and that home has been taken down. We had a police officer that ran the vehicle in, and about three or four incidents after that, that run the vehicle that were left in that lose a life in. There've been several other incidents, including the money that the town spent to take more, more action up Crown Creek and build a new bridge and underpass, and I can't remember the cost, but it was probably anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, so now the town's investing quarter million dollars trying to solve the problem. When this happened again the other night, um, it affected people in Mall Berry, Beach, um, several other places, uh, all kinds of pictures on social media, um, several residents that I know and several residents that I don't know, like what's the town and city that they're going to do. And my answer to that was, over the last twenty-two years, even though I've had ten years involvement with the town council, that we have spent near quarter million dollars to help that project, but at one time, there was a survey done by the Wayne County Water, Platte, or however they pronounce that, that they could help out by putting some retention ponds and some other stuff, and the cost of that was pretty extreme. And I was told by at least one of the previous commissioners that is no longer there, and one of the commissioners that will be exiting this year, that that would be addressed again, and it never has. For my own example, a lot of these people have lived in these other locations, and maybe it affects a dozen residents, maybe it affects two dozen residents, um, but it does affect the town of Centerville. And, um, when that field, whether it's been re-tiled, or whether it can be retention pond, or whatever, you know, the studies were done, I'm not a water engineer, really has to be addressed because I arrived home at six-thirty, and there was water up to my garage door, I got a pretty seal on it, about an inch on my garage door. I pulled my gun in my garage. Within fifteen minutes, you start seeing mud, uh, field stock, corn, fertilizer, who all knows what's in that. Now they're talking, it's up on, to my porch and up on my garage door, six, eight inches. Um, down by a little police car, and luckily, when we did the improvement to the bridge, it helped tremendously. I don't know if we're fighting or losing battle, I'm saying out there in Wayne County, we need help. You need to help your residents out on Rice and Keller.
All the way to Airborne.
We even, we even spent some money on the waterway down here behind us, and, uh, but after Ed's department and Ed's help come down and kept people from getting in this bad water and driving down it and maybe ruining their vehicle, which they were going to do if, if, if the police department wasn't there and tell them to back up, they were going to try to drive through it. When I cleaned up today, I found, um, not only a trash can that went over the Bald Islands, uh, which is fine, I chased my own trash can, but I found a hole underneath of a car that must have been trying to get through there, and they lost their splash guards, and I found it out of my garden, along with a couple bags of orange trucks. People don't really understand that there's some dangers in this with water. And, and after, after they left my house, they went down, and there was a business that was flooded on the west side of town. And if that's our responsibility, then I think we need to take a look at that again. We had a house down there that somebody just invested a bunch of money in, and he turned it down and made another empty spot in town. I'm pretty sure that probably got, I don't know if they had employees, right, somebody told me that they were impossible for that, but, um, I'm not really so vaccinated, I have, like I said, I had five calls within twenty-four hours, and several Facebook messages that I can share to everybody, I can't share exactly what they said in the phone calls, but I would report them. But, uh, not only do we need to look at what our responsibility is, the town to this problem or any other problem we have in our town, but the county needs to step up again, instead of standing back, because it, it affects how many people want to come here.
We actually, over the years, we've been to the county three different times. And, uh, out of those three times, you know, we, and don't take a look, the last time we went, they hired a grant writer to get a, uh, see if they could go after a grant for this retention pond, and that didn't go anywhere, they didn't really put forth the evidence, and, uh, but Rice and Keller people years ago, the water was so bad coming through there, that their septic systems literally overflowed, went to, to their wells, and they were going to condemn that whole area and all those houses, and what we, we did, we stepped up with that, and, uh, you know, helped them, and they hooked into our system with sanitary sewer to save their, their properties there, and, uh, so, you know, keeping that, yeah, all the water that comes, especially to the east end of the town, comes from the county into the town. Uh, it's, we could, we've spent really millions of dollars with the grant money that we've gotten to do these projects, and we've done about all we can do. If they don't put a retention pond to the east, it's frugal for, for us, and there's not much more we can do.
And not just the residents of the town of Centerville, but township and Wayne County residents, and we're all missing one way together, so that's no pun intended. We, we, I didn't, I didn't agree with the town to have water for the property. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you a lot for listening.
One last thing I have, uh, you should have your packet for our budget, the, all the dates and deadlines that we will have, you have to start meeting, so make sure you, you'll take a look at that. Let me make these announcements, don't forget, June twenty-second, we'll be battling the ban in the park. I believe the, uh, farmers market has had their first, that's on Saturdays, uh, four o'clock to seven o'clock.
Yes.
So make sure to come and get some food. Then our work session will be June twenty-fifth, uh, at seven P M. here, uh, so hopefully we'll have our podium and some other stuff, you know, here by then, so. Anything else?
Gerald? Yeah, we're going to have a board zone appeal meeting on the twenty-sixth, but it will be scheduled at the old conference room, because that's the way it was published.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Centerville Town Council meeting for June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I have Davids, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, Josh, do you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonner.
Aye.
Gary Hooper.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion, Carrie, thank you for that.